I call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Since this is a continuation of our March fourteenth regular meeting, we're going to jump straight down to board considerations, which includes the authorization of one thousand five hundred dollar general wage increase and budget amendment. Mr. Powell?
Thank you. At your Board of Supervisors retreat, you expressed an interest in considering a fifteen hundred dollar pay increase effective April first for employees. That item is on your consent calendar at the Board of Supervisors meeting later, but as you know, you have to vote on it separately as the Board of Directors. So similar resolution is before you this afternoon as the Board of Directors for the Service Authority and the staff recommends approval. Our hope is that this increase will address ongoing recruitment and retention issues.
Move the motion.
Mr. Powell?
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Any board requests and directives from anyone? No? Do you have an update, Mr. Powell?
Two very quick items. I put the proposed budget in front of you at the dais, so you should each have a copy of the JCSA proposed budget for this year. And then secondly, I wanted to revisit the effort to schedule a Board of Directors retreat.
You need to please look at Mr. Hippel.
I had put some dates out. Initially, it didn't seem like any of them worked. I do believe now that Friday, April twenty eighth works for everybody, but I just wanted to confirm and then see whether morning or afternoon would work best.
Either for me.
Either. I prefer morning.
Okay, okay.
Morning.
All right.
From what time?
I would suggest we start at eleven o'clock. I mean, nine o'clock, nine o'clock, and meet at the JCSA operations building.
Nine o'clock on the twenty eighth.
At nine o'clock, yes, on the twenty eighth.
Nine. We got it. Nine?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Anything else?
I was spring training.
Wonderful. I'll send you some pictures.
Thank you.
All right. Otherwise, may I have a motion to adjourn until five P M. on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Hippel.
Aye.
And Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
All right, ready? All right, call this meeting James City County Board of Supervisors to order on March twenty eighth at one oh two. Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
All right, next presentations. We have a couple of those presentations. And I'll come up. I'll come up. Is there something you want to do for the presentation?
I'll just say a few words.
Please do.
If that's okay.
Please do.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come here today. The first presentation that I want to give is around April, being proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month. That has long been honored and recognized for this very important topic. And here in James City County, we participate in the Greater William, sorry, the Child Abuse Prevention Coalition of Greater Williamsburg, which coordinates activities to honor and recognize while also building strong community partnerships. So this year, we will be holding an event this coming Thursday at the King of Glory Church from five thirty to seven thirty. It's a very family-friendly event. We want to encourage folks to come out, spend some time, learn about some stress-relieving activities and some things you can do as a family to help build capacity to prevent child abuse. So that is occurring on this Thursday. On April the seventh, it's Wear Blue Day, so that's a day that we encourage everybody to wear blue to recognize again and bring awareness to the importance of child abuse prevention. And in addition, we will be putting pinwheels out into the community. That's also something that we do every year as a visual reminder. So I do have a few folks with me today that I'd like to recognize for their hard work. Juliette Heisman is the chair of the coalition. And then we have Jenny Bellis from our police department and Courtney Thomas from our James City County care team. So they are part of the group that coordinates all these activities and does a lot of hard work to make sure that we bring importance to this issue, so.
All right, I've got a proclamation to read. And proclamation, April two thousand and twenty-three, as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are the foundation of a sustainable and prosperous society, and our prosperity as a county and a nation is built on a foundation of health, healthy child development, and whereas regularness of those, of the circumstance and the birth of every child should live in a safe, secure, and supportive environment, free from abuse and neglect. And whereas children, child abuse is considered to be one of the nation's most serious health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between abuse and neglected neglect of children and the wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas during Child Abuse Prevention Month, citizens of James City County are reminded of the courage and strength it takes to raise a child. And whereas creating communities where families have access to an array of support and resources to address the emotional and physical health of their children effectively combats child abuse. And whereas James City County remains committed to sustaining safe, nurturing, and supportive environments for families raising children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs success become a partnership between families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas James City County Department of Social Services strives to encourage the James City County community in their continued operation of effective child abuse prevention programs. And whereas James City Department of Social Services participates in the Child Abuse Prevention Coalition of Greater Williamsburg to increase awareness of child abuse prevention efforts. And whereas displays, whereas displaying a pinwheel during the month of April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and neglect, and by doing so, keep children safe. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, recognize April two thousand and twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month in James City County. In witness thereof, I undo set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City County to be affixed this day, this twenty-eighth day of March two thousand and twenty-three. Good job. Would y'all like to join?
I will stay up here for the next one. So as you all get settled, I will move on. So I'm a little bit behind on my months, but March of two thousand and twenty-three, we're still in March, is known as Family Services Specialist Appreciation Month. So I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize all of the staff, we refer to them as the services staff, that put forth efforts to both prevent child abuse and neglect, respond when instances occur, as well as adult protective services, adult prevention services, our connect program, our foster care, our adoptions, all of the programs that we have, the array of services that we provide in James City County to ensure that individuals and families are safe and cared for in our community. So their efforts help to ensure the well-being of children, the elderly, and individuals with disabilities in our community. And I wanted to take this time to recognize them. So I have several staff that came that occupied here that I wanted to make sure that they know, first of all, how much I appreciate them and also how much you all appreciate them, and hopefully the community does for all of their hard work that they do every day, so.
All right. Proclamation, March twenty-third, as Family Service Specialties Appreciation Month. Whereas James City County Department of Social Services provides safety and protection from abuse and neglect to the most vulnerable citizens of the county by administering the family service program of child protective services, adult protective services, foster care, adoptions, and prevention. And whereas Family Service Specialties and James City County Department of Social Services share individuals and families by providing support and assistance with personal, social, health, and economic needs. And whereas James City County twenty-five family service staff are at the forefront of public service, making complex decisions to provide protective services to and to secure the well-being of children and elderly and individuals with disabilities in the community. And whereas in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, family service staff responded to three hundred and twenty-nine calls to child protective services, accomplishing two hundred and seventy-five adult protective service investigations, serving thirty children in foster care, and finalizing seven adoptions. And whereas Family Service Specialties provides ethical public service, respects human dignity, demonstrates personal integrity, promotes professional excellence, and are responsible for the application of federal, state, and local policies and guidelines. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, hereby commend all family service specialties in James City County Department of Social Services and recognize March two thousand and twenty-three as Family Service Specialties Appreciation Month. In witness thereof, I undo set my hand and cause the seal of James City County to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of March two thousand and twenty-three. Good job. Rebecca, thank you and all your staff and all the hard work that y'all do to protect our citizens. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, next. I'm gonna slide this one down. And our veteran on the group here, we'd like you to read this.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation, Vietnam War Veterans Day, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the United States Congress has established March twenty-ninth as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. And whereas Governor Glenn Youngkin has recognized March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three as a Vietnam War Veterans Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and has called this observance to the attention of all citizens. And whereas the Williamsburg Chapter nine five seven of the Vietnam Veterans of America will hold a ceremony at one P M. on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at the Vietnam War Memorial and Veterans Park to recognize and honor the veterans in our community who served during the Vietnam War. And whereas since their return, these veterans have contributed tremendously to their communities, to the Commonwealth, and to the nation, in an effort to advance the American ideals and goals for which they fought. They have displayed unparalleled support for those who currently serving by providing welcoming celebrations for those returning and honors for those who have fallen. And whereas we remember the men and women who so honorably served during more than a decade of fighting in Southeast Asia, where they faced extraordinary and unprecedented dangers. We will never forget their sacrifice, and we value their continued service to their fellow veterans today, as they embody the motto of the Vietnam Veterans of America. Never again will one generation of veterans abandon another. Now, therefore, be it resolved that, this is for Michael, I, Chairman of the James City County Board of Supervisors of James City County, hereby proclaim twenty-ninth day of March to be and is hereby proclaimed as Vietnam War Veterans Day in the county of James City, and call upon all citizens to join in the observance of this occasion and to honor and remember our Vietnam veterans and their families for the courage, sacrifice, and valor. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia, to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of March two thousand and twenty-three. It was signed by Michael Hippel, Chairman of the Board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I think it was well fitting with your service and all that that you read that. And I know it touches your heart just like ours, probably more with being involved in it. So thank you for your service.
We have about fifty or, I'm sorry, about sixty who have already signed up to get certificates from Congressman Whitman's office. And if that's any measure, last year, we had about double that number. So we're hoping to have between one hundred and twenty-five and one hundred and fifty people out there. And we invite everyone in the public to come witness this. This will be right out at the memorial. We have, our speaker is going to be Major General Cia Adolphy, who's a resident of Ford's Colony, and she's a retired U.S. Army. She will be our keynote speaker. But we will have, I think, quite a, quite a group. And we look forward to having everybody participate.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move into our VDOT quarterly report. Mr. Ross and Carol. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hippel, other distinguished members of the board. Happy to be here today to give the VDOT quarterly transportation update for James City County. This quarter includes December first through February twenty-eighth. We had three hundred and eighty-three, four hundred and forty-five maintenance work orders completed, which leaves sixty-two outstanding, which was an eighty-six completion rate for this three-month period. Some highlighted maintenance accomplishments for the quarter. We cleaned out fourteen drop-inlets and repairs. Almost twenty thousand linear feet of ditching was performed this quarter. Pothole patching, we did three hundred and thirteen. Sweeping, we did six lane miles. Pipe covert clean and repair. Almost sixty-seven, I mean, seventy-seven hundred feet. Roadway patching, four tons. Pipe covert replacement, twenty-eight feet. And brush cutting, six shoulder miles. And of that quarter, we picked up one hundred and thirty-nine adopt-a-highway bags of litter. The two thousand and twenty-three mowing and litter cycle, the schedule's on your sheets there, but the, the four, the April third, the notice proceed has been submitted for that, and that will be a mowing, trim, litter pickup on our primary routes in the county. And they follow that about every month, some sort of either primary or primary-secondary combination. Current projects, the Long Hill Road widening, project is expected to be completed in April. The contractor is committed to complete the project. And right now, they're doing some underdrain and storm drain mitigation work and placing the curb and gutter. So once they get that complete, we are, we are in what they say, the short roads. Bridge repairs, patching, waterproofing, epoxy overlays, Route five thousand, one eighty-nine, and Route thirty-one. Epoxy overlay for the Route thirty-one still remains. It's just past, the bridge just passed the, I guess that's a frothy moon right there, that portion of Route thirty-one. Hits guardrail contract. We've repaired sixty of sixty guardrail hits within the county, but they happen too often, so that continues to add up. Richmond Road bike path sidewalk improvements, that's approximately four tenths of a mile project to increase pedestrian and bikeway connectivity from Croker Road to Church Street. The project has been awarded. Fixed completion date is October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The notice to proceed has been delayed to account for long ductile iron pipe lead times, just getting materials in. And April certainly will give us more favorable weather. So that that'll get kicked off soon. And this is not the same project that, this is a VDOT-administered project. The county has a locally administered project for Toano. It's pretty much the same scope for Richmond Road as well. Our latex modified seal project has been awarded. The fixed completion date for that is October the twenty-second of this year. The permanent pavement markings are continued to be removed or eradicated, and temporary paint marking in advance of the slurry operations. This will continue the first week of April. We are doing Route five thousand from Route five to, I'll just say News Road. It's a joint before you, just south of that intersection. And then we're doing Routes thirty from the New Kent Line all the way to Route sixty. And this is the latex modified seal. Our P M five E plant mix contract has been awarded. Our PM 5E plant mix contract has been awarded, fixed completion date for that is November the 22nd, 2023. Pre-construction meeting has occurred with the April 3rd notice to proceed. The contractor is not planning to start that work into August, so he'll still have enough time to get it done, but for this area, he's not planning on starting until August. That is Route 60, east and west from the, just east of Stratford Road to just west of Lightfoot Road. And then we have 603 from the train tracks to Richmond Road, 610 Riverside, from Riverside Drive to east side of Little Creek Dam, Route 645, there are the railroad tracks at Richmond Road to the James City York County line, and which will be all of that, it's Airport Road, we're doing all of Airport Road. And 658 is from Richmond Road to just a little bit east of Long Hill Road, and then 715 is North Riverside to Holly Lane. We do have a project coming up the first week of April, April 3rd through the 7th, 199 at Route 60 and 143. It'll be night work, but we'll be closing those ramps in quadrants, so there's two ramps on each quadrant, we'll be closing each one of those to do some tree trimming, some brush cutting, some clearing of the guard rail and the median area between the two ramps, removing some trees that have died, and really make it look a lot better for the summer. We also have bridge replacement over Dyosken Creek, that project is under construction with a completion date of April 7th, 2025. Contractor continues to construct temporary bridge abutment, and will be working on temporary bridge access trestles. That is the Hicks Island area, if y'all are familiar with that, and that is a narrow bridge, so we are building a temporary bridge so the traffic can get through while we're replacing the existing bridge. HCP safety improvements for unsignalized intersections project, this project is awarded, it will be placing new signage, replacing some of the existing signage, placing stop bars and reflective tape on the stop sign post at 11 identified secondary intersections within the county. We also have this Route 614 sidewalk repairs, this is just prior to the county's Safe Route to School project that is kicking off at Clareburg Baker, that area, so we have a contractor that'll be in, I think it's the last two weeks of April, that will do the slab work prior to that project kicking off. Just some completed projects, then I'll get rid of these, is the Old Town Road, Long Hill Road rev share project, was kind of connected to the Long Hill project, that is complete, Skisk Creek Connector, complete, the Toano Sidewalk Access Repair and Replacement was complete, and the Route 199 East and West Retaining Wall Rehab Project has been completed. Some upcoming projects that we are working, we have the Long Hill Road Shared Use Path that connects the Long Hill Road project back towards Long Hill to Pew Split across 199. We are working on some opportunities to reduce the scope or reduce the cost because of inflation, the estimate now is much, a lot higher than our budget, so we're looking at opportunities there, but currently that is set for February 13th, 2024 advertisement, so more news as that develops. The Croker Road four-lane winding from the library to Route 60, that goes to advertisement May 9th of this year, so that's just around the corner. We have the Pocahontas Trail Reconstruction, and that is looking at a February 10th, 2026 advertisement date. And we have the Jamestown Transfer Bridge Hydraulic Lift System on the Glass House side, and that is advertisement date of April 11th of this year. And then we have the HCP unsignalized intersections for Long Hill, and that is January 29th, 2024. So there are some up-and-coming projects and some advertisement dates coming pretty soon. We also have the 2023 Williamsburg Residency Full Depth Reclamation Project that currently is awarded the same time our other schedules are, but we had to go back for re-advertising with that and should know something in April. County safety projects, we have the West Providence Road Cross Drain Replacement Project, we were just talking about that, that is awarded, construction started yesterday. Newtown Avenue, Watford Lane Sidewalk Repair Project, that has been advertised. The Windsor Forest Drop Inlet Spray-In-Place Lining, the quick quote for that has not been advertised, but that is planned. The Ironbound Road Sidewalk Repair Project, that is awarded. Route 143 Cross Drain Structural Failure Spray Lining Project has not been awarded yet, but is on the plan. And then we have a Goodrich Durfee CIPP project that is on the plan but has not been advertised yet. So they are the safety for FY '23, the safety county projects that we have. Some that we're looking for FY '24 is the no-left turns at 614 and 5, and at Route 30 and 746. They are, it is in preliminary engineering phase, coupled with the secondary six-year plan that y'all will be working on here very soon, we included those in that as well for funding. Traffic studies, so I have a long list in the past three months. So Grove Area Illegal Littering Signage, based on the review, installation of littering as illegal signage is recommended for quite a few streets that are listed. We also had an intersection safety review at News and Ironbound Road, no additional traffic devices were recommended for the study. We had an HCP unsignalized intersection for Long Hill Road performed. Some things that came out of that were install advanced warning intersection signs, install crosswall pavement markings across Glen Burnie, you know, approach, and install double arrow signs facing Glen Burnie Road, and some of those will be added into the HCP project that I talked about earlier that has like a February advertisement date. Safety review for Cranston's Mill Pond, based on this review, the following were recommended: Upsize the existing advanced warning winding road signs to a 36 by 36 with supplemental 35 mile-per-hour advisory speed plaque. Install two additional upsized advanced warning winding road signs and supplementary advisory plaques, and then refresh the centerline pavement markings within the study segment, and pursue shoulder and drainage rehab to mitigate roadway water pooling. And we are looking at opportunities, there's a few things we're looking at there, and one is the covert replacements with a box covert, there's three culverts in there currently, and then some roadway elevation. So we are working towards that, and Route 606, Riverview Plantation Speed Study, it just really changed the termini of the existing 35 mile-per-hour speed limit that exists. The statutory speed limit review for Riverview Plantation, there was no additional findings there, the 25 mile-per-hour signs were already in place, and then we have the stop-for-school bus ahead signs on Cranston's Mill Pond, they were recommended. Speed study for Route 60 and Toano, as a result of the review, road characteristics, reported crash experience, most three-year period, no changes were recommended to the posted 45 mile-per-hour speed limit. Intersection sign reviews for Riverview Plantation Drive and Sherwood Forest, based on the intersection site distance, we put yield signs up at multiple connecting roads. Route 60 and Route 199 Safety Review, based on the review, we installed dual indicating oversight watch for stopped vehicles supplemented with a head advanced warning signs westbound on Route 60. And the last one was Green Springs Road, Virginia Capital Trail Safety Review, while no obstruction conflicts were noted during the field review, the following supplemental signage was recommended. We had a couple accidents out there that kind of triggered this review, but it's really putting up do-not-block-trail signs at different termini across the thing, so we had some problems with people stopping in the middle of the trail, and then people couldn't get around those type of things. Land use update, so for this fiscal year so far, we've done, performed 63 plan reviews, and we've issued 196 permits in the county, and we have closed 61. So that concludes my quarterly update for the board, and be glad to take any questions or concerns or comments you may have at this point.
I just wanted to thank you. I know this project over in Powhatan Secondary has been very frustrating because of difficulty in identifying exactly what the cause was, but I'm sure my constituent there is going to be very happy to have that construction done, it's right in her front yard, so thank you for making that happen.
I've got a few items, if you know me, Mr. Carroll. First is, I want to thank you for the work in Kings Point, the Neighborhood Association, I know expressed appreciation for the good work that you've done to keep the roads in that subdivision in good shape. It made me think about the fact that about two and a half years ago, we took a little tour in Rolling Woods, and not much has happened there. There was a little bit of work done on a pothole or two, but they've kind of gotten back into the bad shape they're in. I'm wondering if we're getting closer to resurfacing in that subdivision, and if not, whether some of the spot work that we'd talked about might be making its way onto your agenda.
I'll have to get back with you on that, but I will.
And, excuse me, I know that you received a communication from one of my constituents about the rate of speed on 199, especially in the South Henry area, and that was an area where there was a recent accident involving a pickup truck and a school bus, and, you know, I think it is important to recognize that 199, basically from Kingsmill down to James, well, down to John Tyler Highway, really is not a closed-access road, and the speeds that people are traveling on it can sometimes be pretty extreme, and they may not be paying attention to the fact that there are traffic signals along there as well. I think he had suggested, you know, looking into possibilities of things like rumble strips and so forth, but is there, did you have any kind of response to the concern about the safety of 199 in those areas?
Well, I just learned a little bit about the accident that occurred there. Obviously, you know, we would have to take a study, to perform a study to see what the crash history and what the 85th percentile speeds are through that area, and exactly what those, you know, what those findings are to determine if it is a truly unsafe situation or a one-off type of instance. So that's, I did receive it very recently, so I haven't done a lot with it at this point, but I do know that the accident itself, you know, someone did run a red light, so.
Right, right. And I wondered that since I'm talking about 199 right now, I know that in April we'll have folks from Project Pipeline here at our business meeting to talk about.
Study, yes.
About that study. I've taken a look at the study, it seems pretty much the same as the one that was presented back in, I guess it was back in the fall, and just wondering if there's a process that will follow that would involve the public at large, or should they just be focused on that business meeting that we'll be having?
Yeah, I think the business meeting is the key there, really kind of going through what the final study, you know, what we recommend, you know, at that point, then it would be up to the board to determine whether or not they would like to push it forward, but, you know, we're, these are all recommendations of what we feel is the best solution for increased traffic, that is definitely going to happen for that corridor, and how to move forward.
Right, and I certainly understand that the increased traffic that may be in the area, I think that we probably need to be thinking a little bit more out of the box on some of these questions, like taking advantage of directing traffic to the one, to the other side, the west side of 199, where it connects to the interstate, and the fact that we have the three lanes on each, in each direction there now, might help to relieve some of that traffic congestion we're seeing right now as folks are heading down to Newbury News and Hampton area, or down the peninsula, or up toward Richmond. But I'm sure you're going to hear more from folks about this particular thing, maybe not you so much, but VDOT will be hearing from folks. Related again to 199, the fence in front of, alongside Pepper Tree was taken out, and I was wondering who's responsible for restoring that?
We are. We, our contractors looked at it, but it's long lead times on that particular type of fence, so we're just waiting for the materials to come in so they can replace it.
Okay. I guess there's nothing you can do temporarily to take.
It really is, and somebody asked us to take the shrubs and stuff down, that's where it's down at, that's some sort of protection, so people aren't, it is limited access through there, so they're not walking through there, so we'll straighten all that up once the materials come in.
I sent along some material about Gatehouse Farms down Nekeland Road.
Yeah, we're looking into that, the drop inlets at Gatehouse.
It seemed to me it was a pretty serious situation there.
It appeared to me that, and I haven't looked at it myself, but our maintenance staff has, it appeared to me that there was probably some sort of separation or crack in the box, allowing some material to go through there, but maybe as simple as cleaning it out and doing some internal sealing, but we'll run a camera through it and see.
And just finally on, you mentioned as a safety question, the Goodrich Durfee situation, which is in the vineyards? And is that that property where there was a sinkhole that had opened up? And do you have a date for when you think that's going to be?
It's in our fiscal year plan.
So June 30?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I wanted to let you know that Mr. Dorsey Smith came to our last meeting and thanked you for the help for the flashing sign there, you know, by Lakewood that we had worked on, and also for clearing out those bicycle lanes, so. So I had a few questions. One, I'll start with the project pipeline, even though I know that's a long way out. I did have, I went to a community meeting recently for residents that are along 199, you know, didn't, didn't used to be as many as there are now, of course, and they had a question about rather VDOT, you know, you work at night, do you have any type of noise? They were concerned that if there was a lot of work done on 199, what the noise impact would be, if you do it at night, I didn't know if there was any consideration about that, you don't have to give me an answer since that's way in the future, but just... You don't have to give me an answer since that's way in the future, but just, just something to be taken into consideration. When you mentioned the Green Springs, the signs with the trail, are they actually on the trail versus more signage?
They're on the trail.
Okay.
At the, it has intersections that we placed them at.
Okay. And then, thank you for bringing up six fourteen Centerville and five, and I'm glad to hear that it's in twenty twenty-four. Wondered if we might do some things. What happens is those, they called ballards? Get knocked over, bollard, and they don't, they're just kind of a cheapy piece of plastic. And then it, they don't get put back up. The increase of people turning there, you know, and trust me, people like to let me know that people turn there. And so I just didn't know if there was any way like we could spread them out. If there was anything we could do in the meantime to make it just a little bit more difficult for the turn?
Well, we, we did a, we had our traffic engineering kind of design it. So anything off of that design, I would refer it back to them to make sure that we're not impeding any other type of traffic. But however, I would say that if there's a bollard that gets knocked down, either submit a work request, we'll get them back up.
Okay, great, thank you. I have had several questions regarding speeding. And what I've had an inquiry about in a residential neighborhood, if it is possible for the speed limit to be under twenty-five? And.
Not typically.
Okay, thank you. And so, since you said not typically.
Yeah, there, there are a couple instances, not typical, you know, subdivision speed limits, but there, there are a couple of things in the code that, that we can look at, but not typically.
Got you, okay. And then, of course, I so appreciate you coming here, your willingness to communicate. I have to express some frustration and not, it's not with you, Mr. Carroll. It is with, however, VDOT and how we can get some drainage issues addressed. And I know that you and I have gone back and forth about several, mostly I want to talk about St. George's Hundred or not talk about it because we've talked about it. But we're at a point now where it's going to take quite a bit of money to fix it for these three houses that live with a constant non-draining of their ditch, basically. And what, and so, and there's, there are about thirteen outstanding drainage issues plus in, in our county. Most of those are in Berkeley. There's a few up in Towano and scattered in other places. But, but how do we get, how can we get some money brought down to the locality so that we can get some of these issues addressed? Because it's, you know, the, the people in St. George's Hundred, you know, they've been dealing with this for, you know, they're in the double-digit years.
And if it's one of the priority projects for the board, you know, we have rev share, we have secondary six-year plan that these type of projects can be submitted to. These aren't just maintenance projects. These aren't like we're going to go out and reset pipes or, or just, you know, run the ditcher through there or slope protection or something of that nature. This particular one you're talking about, there's some utilities and relocation that would have to be done to get the appropriate, so it's costly.
Yeah, and see, I think what I come against with the county is I'm sort of in the middle because the county feels, and I'll separate, I won't, I'm not part of that county or that decision piece, that, you know, this should really be, VDOT should be picking up the tab for this, not the county. We pick up the tab for a lot or help with a lot. And now we're being asked to help on a project that, that perhaps county administration doesn't feel that they need to be doing. So then I'm stuck between me and the constituent who understandably is beyond frustrated, but they don't know who to take it out on, so it's me. And I get it, but, so I don't know how you go about solving those kinds of things, but I hope that we can somehow work towards a solution. Because when I, you know, I asked Jason for, and Jason knew I was snippy because I was snippy, because I'm frustrated and I, I don't know, I just wish there was a better way to, that we could work, work on it. And, and I understand that money's short. I understand why, you know, we don't want to put more, you know, it's, it's frustrating when you have the state say, we have all this additional money that we're not using, but yet we can't get some drainage issues done. That money isn't obviously going to VDOT. And so it's just a, it's just a very difficult position to be in. So I'm going to keep talking about it. So, and I appreciate you listening, or at least pretending that you're listening. So you're doing a good job of it. Thank you.
Mr. Hippel, if I could jump in, I'm sure your list is longer than mine, so if I could. Mr. Rossi, on Richmond Road, as you're traveling west and you're approaching the bridge there in Towano to increase from forty-five to fifty-five, and there's a crossover there and Greystone is here, the crossover is here. There are a lot of people that are pulling out and jumping. I can't tell you how many times I've had slam on brakes recently because you're accelerating right there and they're jumping over to hit that crossover. Is there a reason why that is in that particular location? Is there, I mean, is there a VDOT reason?
Other than it was designed there, I don't know if there's any other connected roads on the other side or usually there's some place to do a U-turn in case you miss the road through a town. I'd have to look at it and see.
Okay, just wanted to put it on your radar. Perhaps our, our valuable police department could put that on their radar as well because it, not really radar, but, but it's, it's causing a problem because Pete, somebody's going to get smacked right there, I'm afraid. Because when you're in a place where you're picking up speed, it's hard all of a sudden to slam on brakes right there. So, and I myself am having to do that. So just wanted to put it out there so somebody could maybe take a look at it for us. Thank you for all you're doing for us. Appreciate it.
All right, Rossi, thank you for all the calls I make to you and, and you usually get on them right away and, and take care of all the issues that, that I see as I'm driving up and down the road. There is a, a sink area as you get off Route sixty onto Old Town Road coming from Lightfoot, and where they did some repairs and it, it hits your wheel every time. It's a long section right in there that, that goes across the path. And you'll see it, it's, it's just before you get up and make the turn. If you could check. On Old Town? No, it's on sixty as you get into turn lane. To go to? To go to Old Town, coming from Lightfoot. So if you'll check that. And then also as you go down, further down Old Town, when you get to Long Hill, right in front of C and F Bank, where usually we have some people that gather there to catch the bus and that's where I can come across the street. There's a, when they did the work, they've got a real big sinkhole in there in the grassy area. When they did that maintenance, if they could look at that, there's a DI not far from it, but it takes a lot of water to get up to even get into the DI because of that sinkhole. This is in the shoulder area, right? Yes, it is. And Cranston Mill Pond, thanks for looking into that, those culvert issues and possibly raising that section of road in there in order to allow our citizens to, and then we could get rid of those big ugly signs. I know they're important, but, you know, now guardrails. And we've had, I don't know why, we've had so many people running the guardrails lately. Seems like every five minutes somebody's hitting a guardrail. And if, if somebody has an accident, hits a guardrail, notice your responsibility to fix it and get it back up and all that. Is there, do y'all recoup any of those funds to fix it? You do? Okay.
Usually, usually, I mean, we try to a hundred percent. And if there's a police report done on it, we do accounts receivables on whoever's it.
Okay, I was just wondering, so, you know, as money is tight, so.
Yeah, that actually funds sixty, sixty percent of the hit's contract, probably.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Anybody have any others? Thank you, I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move into our consent calendar. And our consent calendar consists appropriations of funds for an unsolicited proposal, contract award of five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, or two hundred and twenty-four dollars for Chickomine River Park Fishing Pier Replacement Project, which is a good job there. Dedicated dedication of the streets and sections two and three of Scott's Pond subdivision, general wage increase, minutes adoption and resolution of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance violation at one eighteen Pine Point. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull or may I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approve the consent calendar, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Strysnow?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next we'll move into board discussions and dispatch update. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Stevens. I'm going to talk a little bit about our emergency communication center and consolidation today. Before I do that, I'd like Chief Ash to come up and just kind of talk about the current physical situation of our own emergency communication center. I know you all are aware of kind of what went on, so he's going to give us a little summary of that.
Good afternoon.
Steve.
So as you know, on February twenty-second, it's contractor doing some work related to the installation of a second generator, second backup generator in the center and caused an increased voltage that went through the building and damaged a number of electrical components. Everything from surge suppression system to our uninterrupted power supply, surge suppression, HVAC, some receptacles, portions of our radio and nine-one-one phone console equipment, the actual furniture that goes up and down, some of those were damaged. TVs, refrigerators, you sort of name it, it kind of hit a number of items throughout the center. So we're still collecting a lot of what all those things are. We've got a pretty good list, but as we start to repair things and get power restored, we'll likely to find more of those things. And based on supply chain, it's currently looking like July, August for the parts to come in. So we expect it probably wouldn't be back in that facility until August timeframe. So again, we're collecting that list of all those things. We've had an electrical engineer come in and do a kind of a general overview and make some recommendations of having everything in the building tested before using that building in any capacity of a, of a permanent operation. So we're still waiting for that, some of that work to be done. We have replaced some of the surge systems on the power for the generator power. We have identified some temporary fixes to keep some of the critical components up there in there. We've relocated some of our, IT has relocated some of our server equipment down to the law enforcement center. So we've done a lot of things to mitigate should something else occur. Or kind of concerned with one of those things that you take over voltage, it might take weeks or months before you see the issue really develop. So we're making sure that we're ready for any of those things that, that may come up that we haven't found yet, so.
So where are we, when something like this occurs, who's at fault? I mean, if the, if the contractor made a mistake, would, would we then go back to them? Or do we go to our insurance company or do we want to talk about that piece?
Yeah, so, you know, we've, we've been collecting a list. At this point, we've set up a separate account code specific to this event and are charging those costs as we get things fixed against that account code. And I think that's something we believe that it was the result of that over surge related to the contractor. And we'll be working with county attorney's office, risk management and the insurance company to work through responsible party for those things.
Okay, thank you.
You know, with the potential for litigation, you know, it's hard to say too much about that.
Sure.
But currently we are certainly hopeful that their insurance provider will cover the majority, if not all, of those costs. So again, thank you all for being here. I'm here today to talk about a subject that I don't think a lot of us have enjoyed talking about over the years and we're probably not going to enjoy talking about it again today. A little bit of history of consolidation. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we conducted a study to look at consolidating with York, Pecos and Williamsburg Communication Center. That study came back and said, yes, it absolutely is feasible and may actually be financially beneficial for the county. At that point, the decision was made by the Board of Supervisors not to consolidate. Lot of concerns from our dispatchers, as you could imagine. You know, we hate to lose our own employees and that was the overriding sentiment at the time. And there were questions about service delivery. You know, I was the police chief at that point and I spoke then and said I don't really support it. For the PD, it wasn't going to be an improvement, so for that reason I wasn't in support of it then. But as I told Mr. Stevens back in two thousand and nineteen, I'm not going to jump up and down and yell and scream about it if y'all decide to do it. That was kind of my position back then. Today is a little different. Our staffing issues are a little worse, I think, than they've been in the past. And honestly, I don't feel like it's going to improve much. You know, historically, we've had issues with staffing at our, at our communication center, but it's to the point now where we believe it's getting close to that point where we're not going to be able to man our center. We did meet this morning with our dispatchers, very well attended. I think they would maybe not agree with everything that I'm saying here today and I understand that. There's a lot of emotions involved in this. They do a great job. I've known many of them for a very long time. And the hardest part of this is the thought of our employees going to another locality. It's not something we want to do. Again, it's something we feel like we're in a situation now where we don't have a choice to do that any longer. I also did want to point out, they, they are putting a lot of emphasis on that, the consolidation of nine-one-one centers. So there are probably some grants available that we could pursue to cover some of the costs of that if it, if it were to happen. I do want to point out, you know, over the years, you know, we've, we've continued to invest in our dispatch center. After two thousand and nineteen and the decision was made not to consolidate, we moved on with that. We weren't going to consolidate and that wasn't our intention. We didn't talk about it. It wasn't a plan, it wasn't something we were going to do. We continued to invest in our own communication center. We did a lot of upgrades inside the facility, we put some money into it. We hired a new director, we created a new position, a deputy director, and we're really doing everything that we should be doing to keep it moving forward as if it was going to be our own. That was our plan, it really was our plan. You know, we met back in, in February with board members to kind of just talk about staffing and where we were and the concerns that we had then. We talked a little bit about going to York County for a short period to see if we could get our staffing back up. Then February twenty-second happened. That shut down our dispatch center and forced us to go to York County. You know, for me, one of the things that I got out of that was it works. You know, we've been doing it now for five weeks and it works. Some of the issues that we were concerned about previously have been resolved. Some haven't and we're still going to have to work through some of those. You know, the resolution that's in front of you today isn't saying one hundred percent we're doing this. It's saying you're authorizing the county administrator to enter negotiations to try to come up to it with an agreement. There may be sticking points, there may be things that we have to overcome, things that are deal breakers for us. That certainly can happen. Our employees are a huge concern for us. We want to keep them as whole as we can and then that's what we want to see if it happens. Nobody likes it, nobody wants to see it. Again, it's something I feel like we feel has to happen. When we met this morning, you know, that was obviously a huge concern. We will meet with HR and try to find folks' jobs in the county that want to stay in the county. Certainly if they have the qualifications and the skills, they'll get priority over other folks for those positions, for those that do want to stay in the county, for those that do end up going to York County, assuming the agreement gets done, we'll do everything we can to keep them whole. We did have USI do a study to compare benefits with York and James City. They're very comparable. Couple of things maybe they offer, we don't, couple of things we offer, they don't. Price-wise, it's very similar. We're committed to do everything we can to keep the employees whole and that's, that's, that's our promise. So what we're desiring today is for the board to approve the resolution that authorizes the county administrator to enter to an agreement with York County for the consolidation of. the county administrator to enter to an agreement with York County for the consolidation of our emergency communication center. It also authorizes the county administrator to spend up to one point five million dollars. That was previously approved, this isn't new money, it was approved through the CAD, which we would no longer need if we do a consolidation, for some of the costs that it would that come with consolidation. Primarily licensing, MCT licensing, that's a big expense, some other software, some equipment upgrades, some upgrades to their facility to accommodate more people being in there on a permanent basis. That's where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have. Chief Ash is here to answer some questions. I know Mr. Stevens can answer some of those questions.
Chuck, can I add a few more comments to that? I will say, we did meet with dispatch staff, and as Brad said, had pretty good attendance. I think twenty-two or so of our employees, which included some of the on-call employees, and twenty-two is the staffing I think we have today. So with the on-call, we had most of our dispatch, permanent employees, and a few of our on-call staff. Again, they're concerned, very concerned with service to the community, as is ours. They believe it will lessen if we consolidate, that it will be not as good service to the community. Very concerned with first responder safety, as we are as well. They're concerned it won't be as safe for our first responders for a variety of reasons. They're we're concerned that we had not talked with their director and assistant director ahead of yesterday, which we had not talked about the idea of consolidation ahead of yesterday. We have had ongoing conversations with dispatch staff about what's going on in the center, how it's working, staffing levels, concerns, those kinds of things. So it wasn't in a vacuum, but we had not brought them in. And really, we hadn't talked about consolidation really permanently much until the last several weeks, seriously. We, as I shared last fall with you, I think staffing concerns, both in police and dispatch, as we had talked with you in February, we really are concerned about the ability to provide the service. I think some of the employees today felt staffing was as good today as it ever has been. When you look at the numbers, that just isn't true in terms of trained dispatchers on the floor. The last time we were here, I believe, was two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, and yes, we made it a year through that. But a couple of things compounded for me. One, we had a hiring point where thirty-seven applied, and my numbers will be close. We invited all thirty-seven to an interview. We had about sixteen say they would come. We had ten actually show up, and we had four that we felt were qualified. And so we hired four, and we have five trainees in the January, February timeframe. We now have four trainees. Typically, our trainees, we make one out of three make it. So with five hired, you could expect two. You could get all five, but you'd expect two. So my concern is the hiring issues, not just in emergency communications, but nationwide and within our locality of Virginia, are also challenging, and so that just adds another component to it. Again, I don't believe staffing is better, and I'm very concerned, as are Mr. Reinheimer and Chief Ash, that going forward, it won't, it will be hard for it to get better. The ramp up in training is anywhere from, I guess, on a very low side, three months, and I think that's very optimistic. It's more like six or nine months to train somebody. So if we hired five today, we are still six to nine months away, most likely, from having trained dispatchers that can handle it on their own on the floor. And so those things just have made us very concerned we won't be able to provide the level of service that we need to provide. And when asked by the dispatchers, what has driven the decision to recommend this to you, that is it. It is staffing. It is not a savings of money. While I believe it will save money, we made that decision in two thousand and nineteen. It wasn't about money. It was about best service, and we are concerned that we won't get there with the way our staffing's headed. And again, yes, we've had a dip before. It's a different world today in terms of hiring and recruitment and employees and attracting people almost into any job as we talk about things. So those are really the primary concern with that. Again, as Mr. Reinheimer stated, the resolution authorizes me to move forward in doing that. If we run into a sticking point that we just can't address all the concerns, or we hear citizen comments or information from our police department that we just can't overcome and have a satisfactory response, then I'd come back and say, you know, we worked on it. It doesn't make sense, and we're not going to move forward. What I expect to do is come back with, these are the things we've heard from both our employees, both the public, and bring those to you at a later date and say, here's an agreement we still plan to move forward. And then we feel like we've resolved those satisfactorily. Policies and procedure we hear are different in York with that dispatch center. That's not to be, that's not surprising. We hear there's a lot of noise. That is something we've got to make sure from a standpoint of working through that that makes what we're hearing. Yes, that's true, and it just is noisy, or some other things, but we'll work through those issues and try to make sure we have all the answers for that. I think we have a lot of answers from the last several times of talking about this. We still believe from Mr. Reinheimer and Chief Ash and I that it's the right decision for the county, but I want to make sure that, as we hear from the public and our employees, that we don't discount those comments either. So if you choose to move forward the resolution today and authorize me to move forward, we will have that kind of discussion going forward as well.
So would you then come back before, does this authorize you to sign an agreement without coming back to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, ma'am. The way it's written, it does, but I certainly would make sure you're aware of reports, and I'm happy to bring it back. But yes, it would put it to where, if you put what's in front of you and say yes to that, it would allow me to negotiate and enter into an agreement to do it.
I mean, I would definitely want at least a report on what you found, I think, and prior to that.
Whatever you're comfortable with, I'll be happy to do. I do think it's a big enough step that you ought to have it in terms of the information, and I'll make sure you have that.
So I've got a couple of questions. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if I'll just go, okay. So I want to be careful because some language that you're that you're using or that you said that you heard today, because right now, that's where we are, right? I mean, have we been experiencing the issues with our response to calls right now?
It's gone pretty smoothly. I mean, we've been, we've been kind of doing a live experiment of how it might be, and you know, there's been some feedback, certainly from some of the dispatchers today. They talked about some of the issues in the center, which some we may be able to resolve, some we may not. But as far as police fire response, I have not heard anything. I listen to the radio every day while I'm in my office. Haven't heard any issues in regards to that.
Okay. And now we have, we have the police chief here. He so far, he's kept his seat. He hasn't jumped up and down, like you said that you might. So can we expect that he's not going to jump up and down either?
I don't want to speak for him, but I venture to say he probably feels similar to the way I felt back then. I'll let him nod or.
Okay, all right. But but willing to see how it goes as we work our way through the issues? Okay. And so I've reserved to come back. I'll let everybody else.
So the, you know, the board was reluctant to make this decision in the past. There are a few things that I'm wondering about that maybe you can give me some help with. The first is that you indicated that there's a willingness to sort of search for positions within James City County government for those members of the current staff who don't want to become York County employees, but want to stay with with James City. And I guess I wanted to get a sense of what that does to the ability to fully staff at York, simply because we're having a hard time finding enough folks to become part of the department.
Great question. Yes, yes, we do plan to offer folks, well, if it matches up. You know, if someone has a skill where the county is, it's a position the county needs to fill, they would get preferential treatment. That's kind of what we've promised. You know, I don't know how many of our folks will end up going to York County if we do work through an agreement. We've had those discussions with York County, and they're prepared to handle whatever comes their way, whether it's all of our employees or a small number of our employees. They're prepared to respond to that regardless, either way.
And I guess I'd like a sense of why it is that York doesn't seem to have as much of an issue in terms of attracting and retaining?
I can't answer that.
Or do they have the same problem?
You know, the last I asked, and Chief Ash, you can, I believe they were maybe one down or fully staffed. They do count their trainees in their numbers, which, you know, today, as I'm standing here, I'm telling you, we have twenty-two, which includes our trainees, too. So, you know, they have quite a few trainees, assuming like ours, maybe a portion of them make it, a portion of them don't. They'll have some vacancies if all their trainees don't make it. But with the efficiency of having that many people to draw from, there's a lot more people available to help out. You know, typically, I think on a normal day, you know, our dispatchers stay very busy, but they're not overwhelmed. You know, the overwhelm comes when you get a really serious incident or multiple incidents going on at the same time. Having a lot of people in the center to help deal with those issues when those issues occur, because they don't occur that often, fortunately, that makes a big difference. You know, just having those people there to serve as backup and to be resources when needed. So I think they have a plan to be able to work through any issues with manpower. I can't say exactly why they don't have the vacancies that we have. I don't know the answer to that question.
Because that's, I mean, obviously, if if they were having the same kinds of issues in recruiting, I'd have a concern about, you know, how that was going to solve our problem. And if they don't have the problem of recruiting, what are they doing that might, we might have thought about or been able to do more effectively?
I don't believe they've been down the percentages that we've been down.
Mm-hmm. Right. So that that does, you know, sort of, I guess I'd like a little bit more information about why we've had a harder time than they have in maintaining those positions. And and then in terms of redundancy, you know, I always hear that that there is plenty of redundancy available to us through Suffolk or other places. I guess I wonder what would happen if York had an incident similar to the one that we've just experienced where they can't really use that center for a significant period of time.
Sure, and we would maintain some operational readiness at our dispatch center. In the meantime, until ours is back up and available to do that, they have made arrangements to have that in York County. You know, moving forward, I believe their long-term plan, maybe to add something to the new sheriff's office that they're building, to serve as the backup. If that is done, and that's the permanent solution, if we do consolidate, then our location would probably become free for us to utilize however we want it. We wouldn't have backup there any longer. Thank you.
Brad, if I could. So it's two thousand and nineteen, I think it was, when we were talking, when we made the decision to go with the CAD and keep everything here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was supportive of that as well. But I am concerned after hearing you all speak about the concerns of staffing. If your county is fully staffed, how does our crew fit into that fully staffed? And you kind of just explained it, but I just wanted to make sure that if if our staff is going from here to there and they're fully staffed, how does that work?
Sure, and and fully staffed for York County today means they answer radio calls for York County, Williamsburg, and Pecosin. If we consolidate, throw James City into that, which, you know, on a scale is larger than Williamsburg and Pecosin, similar to York County. So they would need the additional employees.
Okay.
To help with just the call volume, the dispatch calls, answering calls, all that. So they certainly would need additional personnel. There's no question that they wouldn't need additional personnel, because their workload would increase for the center pretty significantly with adding James City to it.
And then, and we've been operating out of there, you said, for five weeks now?
Five weeks to the day. Yes, ma'am.
And it, so have you gotten feedback then from our staff, how that's working for them over there? Are they training, are they training over there now?
We do have some that are in training, some of our newer folks that are in training that are working over there. You know, the feedback I've gotten from Rebecca is that things are moving along very well. We haven't seen a big decrease in service that's been provided to our public safety agencies with them working out of York County, which was a big concern. That was one of the reasons, I think, we chose not to do it before. Well, we've done it. We've been doing it for five weeks, and it seems to be working very well.
Have we ever done that before?
Not on that time, not for that long of a time.
So if if our current staff then decided they would rather seek a position here and stay in York County, would that be at a comparable pay scale?
We'd do everything we could to keep it that way, yes. You know, I don't know the positions that'll be available. You know, we're not going to create new positions to move them into, but if we have positions that are open, that they qualify for, and they would apply for them, they'd get preference. They're currently making forty-eight thousand, and they're applying for a position that makes twenty-eight thousand. I can't say that we'd continue to pay them that same amount to fill that slot.
Ms. Sadler, I think, yeah, I just want to, I think, from a response perspective, I think we feel the response has been pretty good to the community. The community probably doesn't know it's terribly different of where they're calling. I think when you hear from employees or what they relay to us, the noise is different, the policies are different, the rules of how they leave the center, when they put their personal stuff, all of those things are different. It's a noisier center. It's a busy, a bigger center. I think you'll hear those kind of things that, from their perspective, the experience isn't great over there. I think from a perspective of community response, I think we believe it has been good for these five weeks, but I think you'll hear from employees that some of the nuances between what we allow in our center and what's allowed in that center are different. So I, we heard that today. I think you will hear those kind of concerns as well.
That's something that that York is willing to talk about in terms of, you know, the possibility of reducing the the noise levels among the dispatchers?
That'll be part of probably our discussions with with the agreement, negotiating that agreement. You know, we will be a part of the the regional nine-one-one board, which helps to set some of those things in the center, but it would be their center. You know, they would have the ultimate decision on a lot of those things. But if it's a situation where, you know, for instance, our police officers can't hear the dispatcher on the radio because it's too loud in the background, or vice versa, that's a huge concern for us. So that's something we would certainly bring up and work through.
Williamsburg and Pecosin are part of the York. Did they at one point have their own nine-one-one centers, and how long have they been consolidated with York?
Williamsburg had their own. Did Pecosin ever have their own? Pecosin had their own, too. Williamsburg, they consolidated in two thousand and seven, eight? When was, I don't. It's been several, several years.
So but they both were independent, and they both have consolidated into York.
Yes, sir.
Do they both maintain their nine-one-one centers as backups for operations, or they're completely out of that?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so right now, they're, the city of Williamsburg and city of Pecosin do not have a facility backup.
That's correct.
How many employees do they have over there at York, do you know?
Seventy-eight, seventy-seven, some. Sixty, seventy-ish, somewhere around there.
Sixty, sixty to seventy, okay, just the ballpark. And and we have twenty-two.
We have twenty-two currently employed.
Currently. What what what's the most we've ever had?
Twenty-eight's been our maximum allotted. I don't believe we've ever gotten to that number. Brian can maybe, or Rebecca even can maybe answer that question.
Okay. I think really, I think the bottom line for me is I'm really concerned about service to the community. It's what it's all about, whether whether it's independent or whether it's consolidated, it's about service to the community and the ability to to deal with it. It appears to me that if we did consolidate, your plan would be to keep a backup facility until such time as maybe York had a different, different backup.
They currently have a backup. They've set it up. Where is it at in their, in their Public Works Building? Because ours is unavailable because of the damage. So, you know, once ours is back up and we're able to operate, then we would serve, could serve as that backup. But their long-term plan would be to create their own at the sheriff's office, the new sheriff's office building that they're building, but that's probably a year or so down the road. But then that would become their primary backup, and we would have our building to utilize as well.
I think the frustration is that or as we discussed this before, it was clearly a case of reason we decided not to do it was it was, it was just a financial decision. It wasn't, it was one where we were more concerned about what we're doing here. I guess, you know, if we decided we were going to stay independent and then couldn't man our facility, then the service community is going to be adversely impacted. So we're sort of torn. I'm sort of torn because it's, you know, one way or the other, it looks like it's a real difficult process to make sure we we do provide the service that our citizens expect and deserve. So I've, I've come back to what Ruth was saying earlier. I, if we, if we decide to pass this resolution, I really, really want the board to have a review of it. I'm, I'm, I'm. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable giving an unequivocal, you know, go ahead without knowing more of what, what can transpire.
So if we get our system back up online as a backup, would that be with the current system that we're using now or would it be York County system because it's different?
We would get our system back up and running the way it currently, the way it was and the way it currently is.
We'd have to have somebody stay trained on making sure they can use that system.
Yes.
I think your question is, only thing different is the CAD systems.
Correct.
Right. So if we are not consolidating, we're independent, then we have to maintain the two separate CAD systems. That's part of, we were, did an RFP to replace anyway. Should we consolidate and kept our building as a backup? It's the backup for radio and phone, which are already combined systems. And then a CAD, the York County CAD system would be ran in our building as the backup. Again, until the other solution for a backup was done.
I'm unsure if there's going to be.
There's really three components. You've got phone, nine-one-one, and CAD. Phone and nine, or excuse me, nine-one-one phone, radio, and CAD. Nine-one-one phone and radio are already a shared system.
Thank you.
So just very quickly, how many, well, you're not going to be able, but I think it's very difficult because it's, it's people that you're talking about that are, that are impacted and also have a great deal of ownership in the job that they've done. And, you know, that building's kind of out there. I know when I did my ride along, we stopped by. We visited, you know, there's a relationship piece there between our police and the dispatchers. So they get to know each other more than, you know, just on the radio, which they're gonna, that piece is gonna somewhat be given up. So it's, it's very tough. And it's a, it's a, it's a very hard decision to have to make. But you come down to safety because I, I think that when you talked with us in February, we were very close to being too short. And we had people that were willing to work additional hours in order to make that up. But that's the way we were making it up. We weren't making it up because we had the people there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we hired some on-call folks. We had folks working overtime. Because their, you know, their desires, they want to stay here. And we understand that. This is, you said it, this is extremely difficult decision because of the people. But because of the service and because of what we feel could happen, we just don't think there's an alternative right now.
So I think, I, I know, I know Mr. Hippel's going to want to say something, so I don't want you to have to come back to me. So I just, I would like to have to, I would like to just get a review if the resolution passes. And I think I would just ask that as we work through it, that we, you know, like feel, people will email us, but if we can, you know, so often these things sort of go down a different path. And if we can just keep it, if, you know, if there's any way to keep it to, you know, what's the best way moving forward? And, you know, understand that, that I don't think anybody up here, we all understand what's involved. And it's very, it's very difficult to look at these faces. They're, they're taking this very personally. And I understand that. And that's very, very hard. And they've meant a lot to this community. And they will continue to mean to this community, but it would be under a different way if, if, if the center ended up moving there. So I don't want anyone to think that we don't understand that. So.
So I, I just, real, real quick, if I could just ask one other thing, and that is, first of all, let, let me again sort of reiterate what Ms. Larson just said, that I think everybody understands this, the pressures, the stress of this job and that part of the reason that people are willing to do it is because they feel they're really making a contribution to their community. I think that's, there's no question about that. I, I was curious about the financial arrangement, how it is, how it's determined as to how much we wind up paying for it and.
Yeah, I think that's something that was looked at previously. Certainly something that'll be looked at again, obviously. And we will, we'll work through that. I don't have an answer for you that, for that right now. You know, when it comes to vacation time and sick leave, you know, York County, I'm assuming is going to want to get paid for some of that. So our employees can carry over all that time. So there, there's a lot of those issues that we do still need to work out. And that'll be a part of this process.
Oh, we'll get that information though.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, this is definitely a very tough decision. I mean, I know a lot of dispatchers and with being in the fire department so long as volunteer. And, you know, I know the fire department and police department and dispatch, it's a family. It's a very unique family. And you know, if I wasn't on this board, I'd probably fight hard to make sure dispatch stayed in James City County. But what I've got to look at too is, I love dispatch. I, I don't think we have, could ask for a better dispatch. They know what's going on. They know the tick of the community. They know all of it. But the only thing about if we, we are at twenty-two now, our normal is twenty-eight. If we can be full, if we lose three or four of those, what happens then? You know, what, what, and sitting in this seat, the emotion is very important, but also the, the protection of the rest of the citizens that are out there. You know, to make sure that they're protected and, and they have everything they need. Since dispatch has moved to York County, I've made a couple of calls on different emergencies. And, and I didn't think about it because I called right into dispatch, the normal line, not to nine-one-one. And it got picked up and it got handled and they were professional and, and I know it was, you know, our staff picking up our calls. But, you know, if I didn't know dispatch was not in dispatch, it was in York County, I never would have known that. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. I am talk, would you remove her, please? Thank you, sir. Ma'am? I wish she'd have waited for the whole conversation. And I know it's tense.
We trust you, Brad.
And I know there's a lot of, you know, concern about it. We're, we're not saying with this resolution, we're moving today. We're saying we're going to explore this. There's a possibility if we don't look at every option of what we need to do for the betterment of all the citizens, we're not doing our job up here. And sometimes there's tough decisions that need to be looked at. Do I want dispatch to move? No, I do not want dispatch to move. But is there, is, is there a possibility that we could fail somewhere? And dispatch gets blamed, we get blamed, y'all get blamed, fire department gets blamed, police get blamed. And because we're not fulfilling our obligation to our citizens, that's what we have to look at. And emotionally, I fought hard last time with dispatch was, you know, the, going through this and, and I didn't want to move. Did not want dispatch to move. We had great dispatch. And, and like I say, it's a family. And this is a tough decision, but I think we need to explore the options that are out there. And do I want to have York County in charge of our dispatch? Y'all all know what I've told you. No, no. But is it the best decision for the citizens? That's what I've got to look at. And so, and I'm sorry the lady got upset there. It, it is just passion. She loves her job. She loves what she's doing. It's like all ladies here. They love what they're doing in James City County. And definitely what we're talking about up here, they don't want to talk about it. And I don't blame them. If I was in their position, I wouldn't want to either. And I feel for them. And, but then we've got to look at the other side of the fence too and, and do the job we're elected to do, which sometimes is not very popular. And I'm sorry it's not. But do I have anybody else that wants to speak on this matter?
So could you, would you just clarify then where we're landing with this, if we're going to pass this? And again, I can't thank you enough for everything you do for our community. Fought hard last time too to keep it up here and I just want to make sure what we're doing with this. Are we good? Is there, is there a place in here where it says that we're going to be reviewing? Do we need that in there?
All right, we can take the execution out of it. And the county administrator can bring the agreement back to us.
I would just, I would probably, for me, if he would, if, would give the board a chance to review it prior to him, if he decides to execute it.
Right. And we'll just scratch execute out, tell it meets with the board again with that.
Mr. Chair members of the board, if you want to leave execute, I absolutely will bring it back for discussion, a public discussion before we would execute an agreement. If you'd like to have it where you vote again, then that's fine too. But if we came back and we'll either come back with a recommendation that we think this is right because, or we got into the negotiations, the details, and we don't think it's right because, whichever way you're comfortable with, I'm happy to do. But we'll definitely keep the board involved.
I would prefer to bring it back to the board of supervisors to review prior to the county administrator executing.
I agree.
Yeah.
Jim, you had some concerns on that as well as I did.
Yeah. And I don't know whether if you, if you, if you just take out the word and, the word and execute, basically it authorizes him to negotiate. And then I think, bring it back to us and we can then give him the blessing to execute or not.
Adam, does that cover all the technicals?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's just the deletion of those two words.
I have a motion.
I'll move.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, next we're looking at FY twenty-two four budget review. Welcome.
Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Holland. I'm the budget manager for the county. And today I'll provide a brief update on the FY twenty-four proposed budget, which is available on the county's website as of today. To give a brief overview of the proposed budget first, the FY twenty-four is the second year in the county's two-year budget. Staff started with the plan that was developed last year and we adjusted as needed based on current circumstances. The budget serves as the county's means of implementing strategic planning efforts. So you'll see the FY twenty-four budget includes a strategic plan, goals, and initiatives. The total proposed budget for FY twenty-four is three hundred and thirty point two million. And that amount includes all eight funds in the budget. This budget reflects a ninety-eight point eight million or forty-two point seven percent increase over last year. And we'll discuss this increase in more detail shortly. Despite the year-over-year increase of thirty-eight point nine million, there are items that, excuse me, despite the year-over-year increase, requests of thirty-eight point nine million are not included in this budget. This unfunded amount does cover all funds and it includes both operating and capital costs. No new positions are funded in the FY twenty-four budget. However, funding is proposed for a wage increase for existing positions as well as reclassifications and career ladders. We'll go over what has been funded and these unfunded requests later in the presentation. But first, we'll go through a breakdown of the proposed budget by fund. On this slide, you'll see the FY twenty-three adopted budget, the FY twenty-four plan, and the FY twenty-four proposed budget for each of the county's funds, as well as adjustments for inter-fund transfers. The final column provides the difference between the FY twenty-three adopted amounts and the FY twenty-four proposed amounts. As you can see, the main increases in the proposed budget relate to the general fund and the capital projects fund. And we'll highlight the drivers of these increases on the subsequent slides, starting with the general fund. This slide presents the major differences in that fund. As mentioned, the proposed budget includes funding for a wage increase, which would be a five percent raise for employees July one, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four point one million dollars. Also, the county's operating contribution to Williamsburg and James City County schools is increasing by four million in the proposed budget. As you know, the general assembly has not yet adopted its budget, so state funding to schools is uncertain at this time. And local funding may change once the state's budget is adopted. To address some of this uncertainty, the county's contingency line is proposed to increase in FY twenty-four by two point four million to provide for unforeseen operational needs of the county as well as those of the schools. Increases in general fund transfers in capital projects and tourism in the amount of one point seven million relate to increases in the related revenue line items. There's an increase anticipated in historic triangle sales tax, which is used to fund CIP expenditures. And there's also an increase anticipated in lodging tax, three fifths of which is mandated to go towards tourism. Additional increases in the FY twenty-four proposed budget include fringe benefit cost increases, increases to the county's contributions to Williamsburg Regional Library and other outside entities. And then increases mentioned earlier for position reclassifications, market reviews, and career ladders for existing positions. From the revenue side, the fourteen million dollar increase in the general fund primarily relates to the revenues noted here. General property taxes is anticipated to go up by seven point four million dollars. Now, there are no changes proposed to the real estate or personal property tax rates. FY twenty-four is a non-reassessment year, so this increase primarily relates to anticipated growth and development in the county as well as the assessed values of existing property. Other local taxes are expected to increase by five million and that relates to trends we've observed in sales tax, lodging, and meals tax revenues. Lastly, on this slide, you'll see charges for services are anticipated to go up by point nine million. That relates to recreation center fees and before and after school program fees. And those fees relates to, relate to the costs for providing those services. Our medic transport recovery fees, also known as ALS, BLS fees, are also anticipated to increase. And that's just to align with the Medicare reimbursement rates. Now, these items cover the main drivers for the general fund changes, moving to the capital projects fund. Now, the FY twenty-four proposed budget in this fund is ninety-five point nine million dollars. I'll note that activity in this fund fluctuates year to year based on volume and magnitude of projects. So the FY twenty-three adopted budget was sixteen point one million dollars. And that, between this year and last year, it's a seventy-nine point four million dollar increase. This increase is due to the projects planned for FY twenty-four, which includes thirty million dollars for a new general services administration building, twenty-five point nine million for preschool space for the school division, and then design costs for the county government center in the amount of twelve point three million dollars. These three projects alone make up sixty-eight point two million dollars of the FY twenty-four proposed budget in capital projects. And then the rest of the difference is made up by other school, library, and county projects. Now that we've discussed what's included in the FY twenty-four budget, I'll move on to items that are not funded. This slide provides a breakdown of unfunded items by fund. As mentioned, these requests include capital, personnel, and other operating costs that could not be funded with the resources available in the proposed budget. FMS collaborated with departments to determine essential or mandated needs for FY twenty-four. But some of the cuts unfortunately mean delaying maintenance or replacements that are necessary. To help address some of these more pressing needs, we've been working to identify what unfunded items can be purchased in FY twenty-three with expenditure savings or revenues that are coming in higher than anticipated. To that end, staff has developed the list shown on this slide, consisting of items we are working to fund in FY twenty-three. I believe a draft of this slide was sent to the board yesterday, but we have been working with departments constantly and trying to keep this up to date. So there is an adjustment to, to the prior draft. We have removed three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of vehicle replacements. We've been working with that department. And based on their current needs, they, they no longer need that particular request. FMS will continue to work with departments in, over the coming weeks to identify what resources, resources are available and what needs can potentially be met in FY twenty-three for items that we cannot fund in the FY twenty-four budget. And the goal would be to bring a resolution to the board at the April business meeting to appropriate funding for the requests that can be met. Regarding the FY twenty-four proposed budget, this slide provides important upcoming dates in the process. The location for each of these meetings is here at the building F in the Mount Bay Road Government Complex. I also want to mention again that the FY twenty-four proposed budget is available on the county's. website. This document includes high-level summary information as well as line item detail for each department and information on each fund. With that, are there any questions?
I just had a quick question about the one, one of the items that was not funded this year, the Virginia Public Assistance Fund.
Yes, that was for staff. They had, they had personnel requests, and, and no new positions were funded in the budget.
I had a question, salary study. That always gets me a little concerned because we do these salary studies, 200,000 is no, and then we can't fund it. And so then we have to go out and do another salary study because we're behind. So what's our plan with doing a salary study?
Yeah, Ms. Larson, we removed it from next year's request. We had had it there. We put it on this list to talk if you're okay with using some of the additional revenues from this year, we'd like to move forward with that study. What you said is absolutely correct, and in my experience as well. I think you last did one in Evergreen. We were implementing the second year when I came in 2018, so that would have done, you did something in 17. Probably mid-16 and 17 is when you went through that. I will tell you, we are reviewing and doing small-scale adjustments, I won't say weekly, but it's close. And when I talk to other COs in the region, they're doing it too. And the challenge is, if we don't, I'm hiring, you know, I have a staff of five doing the same job. They're making 40. I'm having to hire somebody else at 42. It seems very unfair to bring somebody in from the outside with similar experience, years of service, and whatever else, and pay them more than people that have been here for three years or five years. So we are regularly making those adjustments. The other adjustments we're regularly making, we'll put an advertisement out, and we get zero applicants, zero. So we'll do a market study to see why our accountant, for instance, may not be drawing applicants, and we're paying, I'm making up numbers, but we're paying 35, others are paying 40. Well, if I don't make some kind of adjustment based on that limited market review, which we are doing, and that is going on throughout our county departments, because if we don't, I think the situation for us continues to worsen. And again, as I talked to the other chief administrator of officers throughout the region, they're doing it too because they just can't get people to fill the roles for what our entry-level pay are. So my hope with the salary study is, one, we haven't done a comprehensive look since the Evergreen study. So I think in some cases, we will have made some gains. I think it will show a need that's a big need, but I think we need a comprehensive, well-done study to defend what we may or may not do for salaries. And I say that to mean it will be a big ask. We'll get to the end of the study. We'll talk about how do we pay for longevity? How do we, you know, we discussed healthcare and retirement at the retreat. All those things will come together. It will be a big number, and you won't, I don't believe, be able to do it all, but it gives us a really good basis of, bless you, where we're in the worst shape, and where we can make some gains, and we know what the need really is at that point in time. And I would tell you, our salaries are average. Our cost of living is not. And so as we go forward in time, we are sort of keeping up with the region, but we're not ahead, in Scott's opinion, relative to salaries on other localities around us. And I'm looking pay scales, and that's not always a fair comparison because what an accountant does here may be different in a different locality. The salary study will be a little more in the meat of it to look job duty to job duty so we can see our accountant maybe really is paid right compared to what somebody else is doing. But I think it will give us a basis for a more comprehensive look at what we need to be doing for salaries. But what you said is accurate. It will be a big number.
Well, and I guess my only follow-up to that is, I mean, it's, it is a lot of money, but I realize it's not. So I'm, I'm not trying to totally rain on your parade, but, but just what you said about how it's 40, that's 42, then it's, I mean, it's kind of a difficult time because everybody, it's just a moving, it's like the duck on the, on the, at the carnival, because we offer somebody something, and then somebody else comes in $1,000 higher to get them to come over there. It's just really, it's really tough. So it'll be interesting to see how they're doing a comprehensive salary study these days.
I think at any point, it was probably a look at that point in time, but to your point, right now, it is a really difficult market to keep up with. And I will tell you, it's a problem at our entry-level salary. It's also a problem at the higher end. We've had a capital project coordinator position out for more than a year. It's over $100,000 in terms of the pay range. I think it's maybe high 70s until low 100s. We just, we don't have anybody applying. I mean, it's just nobody. And we've hired a headhunter to sort of go out and be a little more proactive. They're just not coming for that. And, um, you know, we've had a solid waste director we've been looking for in that same kind of range, a pretty good salary. It has been really challenging, and we've been looking for that hard for the last six months. We may get to the end of that one, but it's, it just wasn't a huge applicant pool, and it's just a tough market right now. I, I do think the study helps us do that. And that, and that list that she had of, really this sheet here that I had shared was a little more detail of those items. The ask wasn't approval of that. It's just if you're absolutely against it, we don't need to move forward with trying to do them. Most of those would come back for a board discussion or action. And so we were trying to fund those with this year's money since they weren't funded in next year's.
Yeah.
A big part of that is the settlers' market and the dam issues that we had in a couple of places that we were talking about setting aside funding for implementation next year.
And so we took out, from your list, we took out the large for vehicle replacements. Did we decide that the vehicles were able to make it?
With discussion with the police department and with fleet, based on usage and, and how those vehicles are, are lasting and, and their needs. They did just receive vehicle replacements this year, just within the last month. So based on their current needs, they, they said they didn't need to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And this, what we'd be looking from the board basically is, is this list that y'all have at your desk, and be able to fund it this year.
Yeah.
And if everybody's okay with that, I just need more, when I'm taking a vote on it, just to kind of, is everybody okay to move forward in funding this list this year with the budget?
This will come back to us next meeting, business meeting? This will come back?
Many of them would. Yes, sir. We would work to bring back what we need to appropriate the funds if needed and be able to make those expenditures.
Like we've got a, yes, let's move forward. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Excellent job.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to thank my staff, Margot Zekman and Jeffrey Wiggins, and I'd also like to thank our fearless leader, Sharon McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, Cheryl has taken the process through. I harassed her over the weekend. She responded over the weekend. It's one of those things you hate to be in their time all the time, but I know she and her staff are putting in a ton of hours to get it, get it done. I do want to thank her publicly for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have nothing on the board considerations. Board of Crest and Directors.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I had one item, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ms. Sadler, at the last meeting, asked for us to start work on a policy related to developing questions, a plan for consideration of solar farms. And we had an email from one of our planning commissioners that suggested that we ought to also be looking at data centers, and I would like to ask that that scope of work be expended to include those data centers. It seems to me that there's an awful lot we need to know about those facilities, which consume enormous amounts of power and which may have impacts that we need to understand better.
So I, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, to follow up with, in, in terms of that email. I've, I've been getting emails, concerns from citizens about the Norwich Solar Farm. It's a mess. And touring out there, we've, we've gotten lots of complaints, and I'm ensuring citizens that our staff is on top of making sure that everything is being followed and they're in compliance. But thank you to Jason for taking my calls about that. But just wanted the citizens to know, we're looking into all their concerns that are going on out there. And thank you, Joe, for your help with making sure everything is being followed because not 100% sure that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I just wanted to make a little statement about one of our very young citizens that I read about this week, Miss Isabella Strumke, nine years old, who not only broke the girl's record by almost two minutes in the 8K, she beat the boy's record by 26 seconds. It was a very extensive article on, on her performance as, as a runner, and she lives up in Toronto apparently, and I got to admit, I was very impressed, and some very, very nice press for James City County from one of our very young citizens. So I just wanted to publicly recognize her accomplishment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to take a moment. I don't, you all might have talked about it when I was not here, about Margaret Stockton passing away, and I did want to acknowledge that. Her husband Carlton served on our EDA, I believe, and they both, during their time here, were very active. She was especially active at Bruton Parish Church, so just want to take a moment to acknowledge that. And Mr. Supervisor Eisenhower had said something about getting us out to Eastern State. I don't know if he was indicating that some of us should stay, but anyway.
No comment.
Yeah, thank you. But Ms. Sadler and I did go last Friday and got a very extensive tour from Mr. Turner and met with the director there. I think we were just hot on y'all's heels, and you had just been there.
I came later on that afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
They were busy.
It was a busy day for them. Very interesting and what they're doing, and I appreciated the, I, I learned a lot that I was, did not know. And so appreciated Supervisor Eisenhower encouraging them to open that up to all of us. So, and then would just add that I went, did a presentation for the VACO supervisor certification class with Mr. Dow, the chair of the school board, last week. And then had the Williamsburg Tourism Council. We had our meeting last week as well, and we will have our budget meeting in May. And just as a reminder, our meetings are public as are our finance meetings that are on the Tuesday prior to our meeting, open meeting. So they're, they're open if anybody's interested in coming. So, thank you.
You. Yes, Scott, the county administrator, and I went, and we had a very good time with Scott over there looking at everything and had Eastern State's doing, and it's nice to see that they want to be more of our corporate partner. And I told him, I said, years ago they were, and, you know, they were a lot more engaged in the community, and that's why, I know rules and regulations have changed, but it's nice to see, you know, someone who's that much into their job. You can tell Scott and the new director are definitely into their job, and, and Scott was so excited to show us everything that had to do with Eastern State, what they're trying to do, what they're moving forward with. And the other Scott and I, when we left, we both mentioned how much we enjoyed his excitement, you know, to see that again, somebody's excited about their job and doing their job and so passionate. So he, he gave us a great tour, and, and we do very much appreciate it. Can't wait to engage with Eastern State on more projects and things as we move forward.
Well, and it sounded as though you all had an information sharing, because I know one thing that we brought up was our concern over the fact that any incidents there go through the state police. The communication isn't always that great back to our own police department, and they said that you all had mentioned that as well, and that that was something they were going to try to, they have their operating procedures that they must follow, but if there was a way to have, to increase that communication, they were going to work on that so that we, our citizenry could be notified a little earlier. So.
And they're doing it with the fire department as well.
Yes.
On calls.
He mentioned that.
And access, and how do you get in things, and they had an incident the other night that was a normal call, but, you know, we're slowed down a little because of certain things, and they've already rectified that. So, you know, it's, it's nicer when you can have that joint relationship and go, hey, we want to help you. Here's, here's our procedures. Here to get, here's how to get in. Here's who to call. Here's who to notify.
Yeah.
So it worked out, and I know that he, the both Scots were going to, you know, talk more as far as county interaction, and that's why I thought, let that, move that into your report if you have anything.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to do that now? You want me to wait?
You go right in.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will follow up on Eastern State. Scott Turner and I have not connected in terms of that, but we will. But I did ask Chief Dolman and Chief Ash for some instances that I could share specifics, your point of communication, where they could better help. And the director had shared he would certainly look into that and make that better for us. And so I'll relay those to him this afternoon and expect that that'll improve going forward as well. So I look forward to that relationship. I do think they're a good community partner. I think they do want to be more involved and more out in front of the community and talking about what goes on there, and I think that is a benefit to them and the community as well. So the one other item I'd like to share with you is our marina. Just a short update. We are demoing the existing covered boat slips, so we're slightly ahead of schedule. I hate to jinx our contractor, but at this point, that is going fairly well. So more to come on that. And then our boat ramp, we heard some complaints, I think you did, about the condition of our existing concrete boat ramp. It will be in service for a significant number of years from now, even with future phases of marina modification. So we have closed down the boat ramp as of yesterday, so March 27th. It'll be open again before April 20th, and maybe ahead of that to basically tear out the existing concrete boat ramp and replace it with an existing concrete boat ramp. So it won't be a, a really different look, except it'll be new concrete. It won't have areas where people's trailers were dropping off into some, not potholed for lack of a better term, areas within the boat ramp. So that is going on. People with boat passes or can use them at Chickahominy, they certainly transfer to there. They can launch their boats there, and the rest of the marina operation in terms of our rentals of canoe, kayaks, and bikes is not affected by the boat ramp work. So if people will bear with us a month, I think it'll be in better shape for them. That's all I have.
Is it? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just asked, Mr. Stevens, I noticed in a communication we received from the, from the National Park Service that the parkway, Colonial Parkway is going to be closed for the Pedal the Parkway event in early May. Does that indicate that they have agreed that the folks should not feel like they need to make payments for the fee on the parkway now?
Yeah, Mr. McGlynn, I have reached out to the park superintendent to get that confirmed. My expectation is that those that would participate in a closed parkway for that type of event, event would not be expected to pay that fee, but I've tried to get confirmation from the National Park Service on that. As I understand it, it's, at this point, it's not for driving the parkway, so pedaling would be a similar kind of thing. It's for use of the pullouts and stopping to enjoy the amenities, whether it's access to the beach, or walking, or just moving on the sound side. So I'll try to get some clarification on that, but I have made that request and asked that question specifically.
Thank you.
All right, well, look, so we don't have a closed session, but look for adjournment until 5:00 PM on April 11, 2023 for a regular meeting.
Motion?
Motion.
Call, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.